I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd ask everyone bear with me tonight. This is a lot of power and responsibility. Under the city charter, the city clerk will conduct the beginning of the organizational meeting for the city commission, and we'll start with a roll call vote of commissioners. Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
All members are present. And the first thing we're going to do is actually not listed on here, but we will conduct oaths of office for the newly elected and re-elected members of the city commission, if Commissioner Bonzal would join me at the public comment podium, or the, sorry, the presentation podium with the seal on it. I, Evan Bonzal?
I, Evan Bonzal.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Marquette City Commission?
Of the office of the Marquette City Commission.
Of the City of Marquette.
Of the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis? This is the first one we've ever done on Zoom.
I, Sally Davis?
I, Sally Davis.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette?
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Marquette City Commission?
Of the office of the Marquette City Commission.
The City of Marquette?
Of the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
I'm assuming he signed it?
So, the next thing on the agenda is the election for mayor. So the process for this is, as it has been in the past, everybody should have, all of the commissioners should have ballots in front of them. We're going to do just a first round of balloting, and all seven commissioner names are on there. If you just want to put a checkmark or an X next to your selection, all the commissioners' names, so each of you have your names listed on the ballot so you don't have to worry about signing them, so I don't have to worry about figuring out whose signature is whose. And once you're done with that first round, I'll come through and collect the ballots. And then we also have our chief of police here to make sure that, we just did, we did a very big election recently, but Chief Grim is going to keep us honest. And on the first ballot, the mayor for the coming year for the city of Marquette is Commissioner Mayor, with a four-three vote. So Commissioner, incoming mayor, mayor, if you want to join me at the same podium, we'll conduct the oath.
I, Cody Mayor?
I, Cody Mayor.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette?
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The office of Mayor of the City of Marquette?
Of the office of Mayor, City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Okay, so now we are going to do the same thing, but with the office of Mayor Pro Tem. So I passed out ballots that are identical but a different color, and you'll be voting for, you want to fill the seat, Mayor Pro Tem. Glad the chief is here to get the counting right. On a seven-oh vote, it is Commissioner Sally Davis as Mayor Pro Tem.
This looks familiar.
This is the first time I've given a oath in the last few weeks. I, Sally Davis?
I, Sally Davis.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette?
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Marquette?
Of the office of Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
So, alright, now I will do one last roll call, where I can hopefully get my alphabetization down correctly, and then I'm going to cede the floor to the new mayor. So Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Mayor?
Here.
And with that, I turn the floor over.
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you, chief. Next up on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you. I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hill?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven-zero. Alright, I have no announcements for this evening, which shouldn't come as really a surprise. And moving on to public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. As a note to the public, the commission's chance to respond to public comment is at the end of the meeting under Commissioner Comments. Do we have anyone for public comment?
I'd like to congratulate all the commissioners, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Sir, if you could actually just swing to the middle podium, you're good. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate all the commissioners, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Jen Hill for her election, and also the staff, and I'd like to also thank you for giving me the time to speak. Before I do start, which I'd like to ask if I could, it's going to take about three or four minutes, if I could have somebody defer their time to me?
Can I also get your name and physical address?
Okay. My name is Bruce Heigler, and I live at 700 Hampton Street. Since the time already started, I'd like to know if I could get some time deferred from another person who was going to speak, if that would be okay? I think it's going to be a little long.
We don't really do that. There is a second public comment section at the end of the meeting as well.
I'll try to go over it fast. Okay, just to give you a little background, I'm a real estate developer, I have a real estate broker, I have rentals, I'm a contractor. I served ten years on the DDA, twelve years on the county commission, I have a degree in accounting and finance. I'm here to discuss the development of 3102 McClellan. It's the pie-shaped piece of land on the corner of Division and McClellan by the ski hill. And there was an agreement made between the city and the landowner. I'll go brief things, and the city agreed to pay for roads, lights, and everything up to $2 million to a private property landowner. The developer was going to build seventy units of middle-income housing, up to seventy units. It didn't say he was going to build seventy, he just said up to seventy. He could build one, he could build two, he could build anything. And he was also going to spend $5 million in two and a half years after the city completed their share, which $5 million amounts to about $43,000 in taxes, which would take fifty years to pay for if you're going to pay through taxes. When I developed property, I paid for my own expenses, paid for my own improvements, and then sold it at market price. I don't know of any developers in the city of Marquette that had the same kind of deal, where a developer was paid by the city to do on private property. I don't know anybody. If somebody knows one, I'd like to know. And when these lots are sold, they're going to be sold at market price. The developer isn't going to sell them cheaper just because he got $2 million. The $2 million will probably be paid, will be a profit for the developer paid by the taxpayers. As far as financing this project, I was told the city borrowed the $2 million with a bond issue, part of a bond issue, and this will pay for the property. Plus, there's also going to be interest. So, in effect, the city gave $2 million to a private developer, which taxpayers will pay for with part of the increase in taxes that he just got, which was the largest increase in the city of Marquette. And that money is going directly to a private property owner to develop his property, and it's going to go in his pocket for a profit. Unfortunately, this is a done deal. I'm here because I hope it doesn't happen again. I hope that we can make some adjustments to it. So, the other thing, quickly, I'll discuss.
Thank you, sir. Again, there is a second public comment section at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Stephen Krieger, here speaking as the interim executive director of Room at the Inn at 447 West Washington Street. Now, my intentions this evening are both to introduce myself and open a line of transparent communication on the current status of our organization. This November has really served as an excellent time for reflection upon the past years, and an opportunity to find some gratitude as we look towards the upcoming months. As we move closer to the new year, my team and I have been afforded the opportunity to rethink our goals and intentions. Specifically, the last two years have served as a reminder that working in isolation has not often led to positive outcomes in our line of work. Only through our collective efforts have we been able to not just survive, but thrive as a community resource dedicated to serving some of our most vulnerable neighbors. In fact, I'm here to renew my pledge to Room at the Inn and vow that we will continue to be an organization space that will assist guests experiencing homelessness so they don't have to experience it alone. No matter the consequence or history, we are here to support our unhoused neighbors. Within the past three months, we've been able to work alongside a dozen external community partners to achieve great success, specifically in providing more than eighty-eight unique individuals experiencing homelessness with emergency shelter services, exited approximately a dozen guests as they began their new chapter within their own households, hired an additional case manager focused on outreach and housing navigation for persons outside of our shelter, mediated over fifteen restorative conversations focused on proactively addressing community conduct concerns, hosted reoccurring sessions with Upper Great Lakes Family Health, Michigan Works, Upper Peninsula Health Plans, and so many more, to provide our guests with essential services dedicated to their personal and professional growth, and supported more than six individuals as they began their process in starting a residential, rehabilitative, or outpatient treatment program for substance use. The previously mentioned successes are only a mere glimpse into the work that is being continuing to work at Room at the Inn. At this time, I would like to extend an open invitation to all interested persons on the commission, as well as to Marquette in general, to come tour our facilities on Washington Street. My hope is that we can continue the conversation about our organization's past and the potential prospects that we have for the upcoming future. As I wrap up, there are a few additional updates that I would like to provide. One is firstly, in accordance with the Fire Department regulations, Room at the Inn will be expanding our overflow capacity to add on sixteen additional spots this coming winter to serve additional individuals on top of our already thirty existing beds. Yet, this doesn't necessarily accommodate all the total persons unhoused on a given night in Marquette. I also want to implore the city commission and fellow leaders to get involved. Together, in my opinion, we have the greatest capacity and capabilities to effectively address one of the most complex social problems currently impacting our community. So I hope to see you all at the Warming Center in the near future, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. As a reminder, this will require a roll call vote due to items one C and one E. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we present the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Roll call, mayor.
Oh, that's correct. City clerk, roll call vote, please.
This is my role now. It'll take me a minute as well. Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayor?
Yes. Vote passes seven-zero. Moving on to new business, item two, the approval of the 2023 city commission meeting schedule. City clerk, background, please.
So there's very little background attached to this item, mayor, but I'll just say, you know, we prepare this schedule every year. It is mirrored largely after last year's, and it's attached in your agenda packet.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, motion to approve the schedule as written.
Thank you. Is there any second? Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Moving on to new business, item number three, letter of resignation of Commissioner Jen Hill. City clerk, if you'd like to give us the background for this one?
I hate to be repetitive. This is kind of the same thing. This is on here largely as a discussion item, I think. So I think the floor would be open to the commission.
Commissioners, is there a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I move that we approve the letter of resignation of Commissioner Jen Hill.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion, commissioners?
Yes, I do have discussion. I regrettably give you to the state senate or state representative's. I know you'll do good things for the city of Marquette in Lansing, and I appreciate that, but it has been an honor working with you for the last two years, and I can't wait to have a city or a state rep that works with the city moving forward on all the different things that are coming up.
I just wanted to add that Commissioner Hill and I have served in the commission together since being elected together in 2018, re-elected last fall in 2021. It's been an honor to serve with you back as mayor and Pro Tem a couple of years back, and as commissioners for these years, and I know you are filling a need in a different way for our community, so as much as it's bittersweet, we are happy to have you in that next role. So thank you for your service here.
I'll just add, I was planning on saying commissioner comments, but I just also wanted to thank you for the years of service that you've given to the city and to the community, and I think we're all really excited to see all the great things you're going to do down in Lansing. Commissioner Bonzal? Oh, yes, I just had, I just wanted to say, no, no problem. I just wanted to say to Commissioner Hill, State Representative-elect Hill, that I'm incredibly happy for you, but also happy for our community. As others have said, it's been an honor to serve with you during my time on the commission, and I've found Commissioner Hill not only to be an expert on numerous policy issues, which is important, but I think perhaps even more important, I have found that Commissioner Hill always puts doing the right thing before her own ego, always is coming from the right place, is not self-aggrandizing, and truly has the best interests of her constituents at heart. And that might sound almost cliche, but I think these days, it's cliche no longer.
And that might sound almost cliche, but I think these days, it's cliche no longer. So, for our politics, so it's refreshing to see someone like that representing us in Lansing. And I'm excited and a little bit jealous that you have such a historic opportunity to make some progress in our state. So, congratulations.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think we all are very proud that you're going to Lansing to represent not only us, but the entire district. And I know that we all look for great things. We understand that great things don't happen quickly or easily, but we think certainly that we have the perfect person and the perfect place at the perfect time to be able to do really great things, not only for the district and for the city and all the voters and supporters, but certainly also for the Upper Peninsula. So, we have a strong voice in Lansing now, I think stronger than we have had in a long time. Thank you for what you're doing.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Well, I can't let this go on without me saying something. I was going to say something for the commissioner comments, but pass Commissioner Hill because we've already accepted your resignation. I'm very happy that you were able to be successful in this race for your position. And I'm very pleased that you understand the issues that Marquette City and Marquette County and the Upper Peninsula know and what we need to have happen in Lansing to help rural communities. So, thank you very much for your service to come and for your service here in Marquette.
Commissioner Hill, would you like-
Thank you, everyone. I'm blushing, and we'll see if I can get through this without crying. And truly an honor. And I'm going to just pull up my letter because I want to, there's things I want to say. So, this, so I was first elected in 2018 and reelected last year. Thank you very much to the voters who have given me the honor of having this service. And yes, and the kind words of the Commissioners. It is a very important service, is very important to me. And so, and in particular, I want to recognize the staff. We, my time on the commission coincided with this tremendous pandemic. And the city had to, has gone through an incredible evolution, both the city operations and staff who had, were dealt a very hard hand and did tremendous things. And in particular, I want to thank, we housed our unhoused people at Lakeview Arena. And that happened while I was Mayor Protem. And that, I think, is the thing that I'm most proud of, is that we took care of those people in that time. I also want to, it's been a big week. Going forward, well, before, there's a couple of things. The other thing I got to do when I was, thank you, when I was mayor was I got to, okay, I got to marry a couple, and like, that was so much fun. And that faith in the future, right, to take that leap, to come together and say, "We're going to do this together." We have a lot of challenges in front of us. And that sense of spirit of adventure and working together of that, the couple that I married and that we are going on to work together going forward in the future, I think is really the spirit that I hope we will continue to work together. And in particular, as we think about the whole Upper Peninsula, the district, the four counties of the 109th, and we think about the Upper Peninsula, this is really a time for us to come together. There are tremendous amounts of resources sitting in Lansing. We have a group of people, I've actually already been down to Lansing and back and met my new colleagues, and we are committed to improving our state and committed to improving our communities. But that is absolutely going to require us coming together, townships, cities, villages, because the resources that we can gather when we come together are going to be the resources that are equal to the scale of the large problems that we're needing to address. And I really look forward to the opportunity, as I'm now serving in this larger role, to help be that bridge and bring those folks together. And thank you very much. Thanks for your service. Thank you again to folks. And I welcome folks stepping up to get involved. It's starting with committees and then, and happy to speak to anyone about serving in public service. It's been a real honor. Thank you very much.
We have a first and second on the floor, and as long as no one else has any more discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one.
Mayor, could I please ask for a round of applause for Commissioner Hill?
All right. The last item under new business is the procedure to fill the city commission vacancy. City clerk, could you please give us the background?
We do have background for this one. Thank you, mayor. The resignation of Commissioner Jen Hill creates a vacancy on the Marquette City Commission. Under the provisions of the Marquette City Charter, the city commission has 60 days in which to fill a vacancy via appointment. Since late 2017, the city commission has made three appointments for vacancies, and staff is recommending the board follow the process originally established in November of 2017. Under that process, applications were made available both online at the city's website and in person at the city clerk's office, and interested parties were given an application submission deadline. Following the deadline, completed applications and related materials were disseminated to the city commission for review. At a subsequent meeting, the commission then provided applicants an opportunity to speak and made an appointment to fill the vacancy. In order to be appointed, an individual must meet all eligibility requirements stipulated by the city charter. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, direct the city clerk to make city commission application forms available online and in the clerk's office, and to accept applications from interested parties until 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 1st, 2022, and to then proceed with the appointment of a new city commissioner at the December 12 regular meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you. I move that we direct the city clerk to make city commission application forms available online and in the city clerk's office, and to accept applications from interested parties until 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 8th, 2022, and to then proceed with the appointment of a new city commissioner at the December 19 regular meeting.
Okay. And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Any discussion, or discussion? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you. I just want to note briefly that I did, in this motion, move the application deadline back a week and also propose that we vote at our last meeting before the holidays on December 19. The idea being just to give applicants, this is a very big commitment, a big decision, to serve two years on the commission. I'm sure some folks are already interested, but there may be other very qualified folks who are leading busy lives and need to decide whether they can make that commitment. Giving them an extra week to think about it and to put together a quality application will get us more and better applicants, I think.
Commissioner Hanley? Any other Commissioners? All right. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Moving on now to our second public comment of the evening. And again, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person, and please clearly state your name and fiscal address, unless you've already provided your fiscal address at this meeting.
From the last one. But my name is Bruce Heikla. There's one other thing I'd like to address is the vault being built downtown. Just like the property out there, it's moving in the same direction where the taxpayers are going to be picking up the costs. They'll be picking up the cost of the private parking lot that the developer needs. The DDA is going to take possession of this parking lot, which is a liability, not an asset. And the DDA will be paying all the costs, operating costs, capital improvement costs, all the other costs, and the developer, after I read the agreement, part of the agreement or with the parking study, they will be paying a minimal rent. The rent that they want to pay will not cover the cost of running the parking lot. So, the question is, who's going to be paying for the private development? The developer or the taxpayers? The taxpayers just got the largest increase, and I just, this is another situation that ain't on the same road, and I just want to make people aware of it before it happens. So, it should be looked at closely, what the actual amount they're paying. The only other thing I'd like to say, I'm not here to blame anybody. I'm not here, everybody has different ideas. I'm here to help. If I can help in any way, I'll be happy to. But I think it has to be a fair agreement, not a one-sided agreement for developers because that's what's happened constantly in this town. And if it doesn't happen, we're going to have another tax increase. I said three years ago, I could see the taxes going to be increased. Same thing's going to happen again because the same situations are occurring right now. And I'll be willing to come to another meeting when the vault comes here and they say, "We can't pay the cost that it's going to cost because it's too much money." Well, then you have to say, if it's not a good viable project, don't build it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. Might as well just keep this alphabetical, and we'll start with Commissioner Bonzal.
Thank you. I want to once again congratulate our next state representative, Jen Hill, not only on her election, but also on several years of great service to the city of Marquette. You know, I also want to note that a former Commissioner, Mike Plord, passed away recently. He was not only a former city commissioner who served our community well, but a friend of mine and somebody who was a mentor to me when I was in high school and college. You know, it's rare that young people in their teens, early twenties, get to talk to local elected officials and have real relationships with them. And I've been fortunate to, you know, have those kind of relationships with several people in those formative years. And that's really probably why I'm sitting up here doing the things that I'm doing on the commission and really in life in general. So, I really have to thank Mr. Plord for his service to our community, but also for having a great impact on my own life. And so, I hope we all remember him. And, you know, I send all the best to his family and friends and loved ones. There, I also want to sincerely thank, there's a lot of thanks to go around, but I want to sincerely thank all the people who vested their confidence and trust in me and voting for me for the city commission for a second time. It's very humbling. I especially want to thank those who helped out our campaign. You know, my parents both spent a lot of time knocking doors. We had other people who knocked doors for our campaign, folks who donated, you know, whatever they could afford to our campaign to help us get our message out to folks, people who put up yard signs, people who helped spread the word in other ways. I wouldn't be here without you. And I also want to congratulate Mayor Protem Davis on winning, I guess, two elections in the last week now. So, congratulations to you. I look forward to continuing to serve with you. I want to briefly respond to a couple of the public comments that were made. You know, I think Mr. Heikla has made some valid critiques about some decisions that the commission has made, and I won't belabor those points because I think he made them quite well. But I think we need to make sure that when development is happening in town, that it's truly benefiting the community. And I don't think that saying that is being anti-development. I think it's being pro-community. It's being, you know, in favor of the idea that if we're going to be in some way directly or indirectly subsidizing a development, the community should be getting a clear benefit out of that that goes beyond just tax revenue that we would get from any private development in our community. And I think at times, we haven't been able to get that. And I think that we need to be very thoughtful and reflective about that moving forward and be self-critical. I also want to thank the director from Ratty coming here, from Room at the Inn. Their organization does so many important things. But as was noted, even with really what should be considered a last-ditch emergency effort to expand shelter capacity by 16 beds, by about 50% this winter, the need for shelter in our community this winter is still not even close to being met. And that, to me, is a moral failing of our community and our society more broadly. There are people right now, I guarantee, out on the edge of town or other folks around our community in tents in the snow. And they've been out there, in many cases, for weeks or months. And some of them cannot get shelter at Room at the Inn due to lack of space and also other requirements and limitations. So, I think the idea that this is Room at the Inn's burden to bear alone is just not accurate. And I think as a community, as a city government, we need to be doing everything we can to pull our weight and do our part to help address this issue. And I actually not only appreciate the invitation that was extended to all of us to come individually and stop by their facility down on Washington Street, but I actually think it would be very productive for the entire city commission to go down and do a tour of that facility at some point, speak with service providers, and also with individuals experiencing homelessness because they are our constituents, just as much as anyone else who's a resident of the city of Marquette. And finally, I just want to emphasize that, you know, the top issue that I ran on when I first ran for the city commission was housing affordability. There are other ones, certainly, that are critically important, but that was the number one issue in 2019 that had affected my own life, my family's lives, and that I heard from people unprompted when I was knocking doors, that people would bring up on their own. And having knocked thousands of doors again this year in my reelection campaign, people are still saying the same thing, that housing has to be a top priority for the city. The difference is, this time around, they look and sound a little bit more desperate when they're saying it. And so, I think that we need to redouble our efforts, not rest on whatever laurels and achievements that we may have made on housing over the past few years, and really move forward and prioritize this issue. And I hope to continue doing that in the next term. I hope that we can make some progress on that in the next few weeks with, you know, thinking about how we use surplus city properties and things of that nature. But homelessness is one aspect of this problem. It is a symptom of many larger problems in our society. And the thing that you hear, I've spent quite a bit of time talking to folks who are serving the homeless and lower-income families in our community, and the number one thing we hear over and over is that there just aren't enough units. If somebody gets evicted, or they are moving into town, or whatever, there's nowhere for them to go. And so, I want to conclude my comments. I apologize for taking some time, but I think this is important. We did recently lose a member of one of our appointed city committees. And this individual said in their resignation email that this could be shared publicly, so I'll do so without mentioning the person's name. They stated, "I want to let you all know that I will not be at the committee meeting tomorrow. I am also going to have to resign my position. I was faced with the choice of remaining in Marquette as a more or less permanent renter in a market that is truly terrible for renters or moving outside of the city limits and becoming a homeowner. I decided to purchase a home outside of the city limits, which I closed on and moved into this past week. Because I no longer reside within the city of Marquette, I can no longer- Because I no longer reside within the city of Marquette, I can no longer serve on the committee. Please let me know if there's anyone else I need to notify. Should anyone be interested in my reasons for resigning, feel free to state such information publicly. I hope that the housing crisis in Marquette faces a resolution at some point, and that I someday will be able to afford to move back to Marquette as a homeowner." And I think this speaks deeply to an anxiety that I personally feel, that basically everyone in this town at my age feels, that we will eventually be priced out, or we will eventually be forced to move to find a decent job, or both. We need to build a livable community. And clearly, when things like this are happening, we're losing great public servants and volunteers and community members. We are not creating a livable community. So, thank you.
Commissioner, Mayor Protem Davis?
Sure. I have more than I usually do, so please bear with me. Stephen, is it Krueger? Krieger, okay. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself. I really appreciate that. And I have visited the Room at the Inn a few times, and I would be very happy to come and visit you again. You mentioned that you were the interim director, but yet it sounds like you have some significant plans and ideas for the future, so I would like to know more about them. And so I will give you a call and come and visit. Last week, there were two very important events that happened. One was the election, and I'm very appreciative of those people who voted for me and have the confidence in me and give me the privilege to serve here again, once again, on the commission. Congratulations to my commissioner to my right, which I've always appreciated, sitting next to him, because he also had won that election. But most important, I want to thank the staff. Kyle Whitney, you and your crew did an excellent job. And I don't know if people realize how many people it takes to run an election. You have the people at the election that, where you place your vote, you have poll watchers, you have challengers, you have the people that stay up until the wee hours of the morning trying to get, make sure that the count is correct. And our election went off really well, so I really appreciate that. The second thing that happened is, we had Veterans Day. And we usually do something at the commission for that, and so I want to thank the veterans, but I particularly want to acknowledge the two veterans that are sitting here on the commission, and that's Commissioner Stonehouse and our new mayor, Mayor. So thank you too, and thank you to all the veterans that are out there in our community. I too want to recognize the passing of Mike Plord. He served on this commission from 2015 to 2018, and I always found him to be so very committed to our community. He always had a smile for everyone and had such a very positive attitude. So he will be missed in this community, and my condolences to his family. The next I just want to mention, our community master plan process has started, and it's going to be a year-long event or process. But we need to hear from people in the community, and we need to hear from lots of people, not only in the city of Marquette, but the county of Marquette, people who visit and people who care about the community. And there's a very simple way to make sure that you're involved, and there's a website called marquetmasterplan.org. And if you go on that website, you can sign up for emails, and you'll be updated on what's happening, you'll be invited to participate in our community events. Oh, look at that. And we have this little poster that goes out, and you, see that QR code? That's the easiest way to get there. But do, do please, we want lots of community involvement. We want to hear what you, this is going to set the stage for what we, we as a commissioner, we as a staff of the city do for a lot of years to come. So what do you want Marquette to look like and feel like in the future? The other thing I want to do is recognize the grant applications that we approved in the consent agenda. And not too many people read the consent agenda. There was an $8 million grant application to help with the old hospital and the development of the demolition of that, at least, and that will decrease our brownfield years that we will be able to go into. The other one was almost a million dollars for some remediation at the Cliffsdale property. And although those are just applications, you know, there's a lot of, we're hoping that they will come through, and we're pretty confident that they will come through, but I just want people to acknowledge that those things don't happen easily. It takes some staff to know where those grants are, to follow those grants. It takes skills to write the applications, and it takes the talent of the management and other people at the city to walk those grants through and make them successful. So thank you to everyone who has a hand in applying for grants and accepting those grants, and then, of course, implementing those grants. Finally, congratulations to our new mayor. Thank you. And also, there's Jenna Smith over there, our past mayor, who has done a stellar job for the last three years and brought our community through some very significant times. And of course, there is that pandemic that just kept hanging on after we thought it was only going to be a month or two, that hung on for over two years. And just what would happen, not only to all of our residents, but even just running the meeting, I think you've set the bar pretty high for all of us on the commission. And, you know, all of the things that we've done in the last three years have been a lot of under your leadership. So thank you very much, Jenna, or past Mayor Smith.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. First, I would like to start with, along the same lines as everyone else, I would like to congratulate everyone on their wins in the election. Commissioner Bonzel, Mayor Protem Davis, and soon-to-be-passed Commissioner Hill. I will miss you. It's going to be hard sitting here without you. It's going to be very different. I've served my two years with the same commission. Everyone has been the same, so it's going to be, it's going to be a difference that will be felt. I do want to make a point to comment on Mr. Heikla's comments. I stand with you on the Division McClellan thing. I did not vote for that. I did not think it was right to subsidize that. I would like to point out, though, that the vault, it's not taxpayer-funded when it's considered the brownfield, and the brownfield is coming from DDA. I feel like there's a lot of confusion about brownfields, and I really like to make sure that we don't mix those terms into saying it's taxpayer-funded in that respect. It can be scary and can be confusing to people. But I do agree that we do need to make sure that all of the things that we do going forward are the best for our taxpayers and for our community. And I think that we will do our best as a commission to follow that. And it is nice to have people like you to keep us accountable and make sure that we are doing that. And so I appreciate you coming in. Other than that, I also would like to say that, thank you for coming, Stephen. I think it's great. I've reached out to you once before and talked to you on the phone, I believe, and I would love to come and have a tour. So that would be wonderful. Other than that, I think I am good for the day.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I want to thank my fellow commissioners, that I don't know that I said that before, but I just, it has been an absolute honor to serve with you and to serve particularly with Jenna as mayor, Mayor Smith and Commissioner Smith, and the adventures here at this table. And in particular, the commitment to the community and the commitment to forward-thinking progress for the community. Thank you very much. It's been, it's been a great opportunity, and I really appreciate that. And best of luck to the new folks and new leadership and the folks who are going to join the commission. I wanted to just mention three things. The first comment that I had the opportunity to make when I got to be in the State House on Thursday was about the need for local aid and the fact that our communities here in the UP are struggling because our tax system in Michigan actually doesn't allow us to even begin to raise the funds that we need to do the work. And so things end up going through tax credits and all these different things that then become, seem like deals that are potentially supporting one person versus, over the community. And fundamentally, the problem with that is that our tax code is not written in a way to actually support the work that needs to be done. And that is certainly something I'm going to be working on in Lansing. We capped our taxes. We have who gets taxed and who doesn't get taxed, and we're, I'm looking forward to having a productive conversation about that, because taxes are the price we pay for civilization. And in particular, at the local government level, it is what pays for public safety, it's what pays for our parks, it pays in recreation, it pays for things like our senior center, it pays for the roads and the snow plowing. And, no, we haven't had enough, as Commissioner Davis said, and I'm going to be fighting hard for that, for not just Marquette, for all of the central UP. I will let everyone know that along with some statewide issues, we are already talking about housing as a priority. But again, these are problems that are bigger than one political unit, and I really strongly encourage us coming together with other units of government to address these problems. And finally, the issue that has been core to my professional career for the past, basically, 20 years, is climate change. And what's going to happen to our future if we do not begin to rapidly move away from a system of energy that brought us enormous prosperity for many, many people, but not everyone, but did bring us a lot of prosperity, but it had a very large unintended consequence. And that work to transition to the future of what our energy economy is going to be is fundamental to our world, truly. Right now, they just finished a meeting of two weeks in Egypt, if you haven't seen it in the news, where the whole, literally the whole entire world is coming to discuss this issue. And what we do here in Marquette is going to really matter around climate change, particularly because people are going to be moving here. And it's not, we have housing problems now. It's only going to continue. And so I'm really glad that the city's stepping up to take on more here, even with the limited resources we have right now. But certainly, again, I intend to get more resources on the ground here, that we understand what we're contributing in terms of the pollution and the carbon emissions, I won't get too technical, but the problems that are created in using fossil fuels. And the opportunities that we have to implement new ways that will actually be cleaner and safer and more healthy for us are exciting opportunities, and I'm going to make sure every penny we can is going to come to the Upper Peninsula for that. We must act to have a better future, and that, because otherwise, we are moving towards more damage and a less secure food economy in particular. So looking forward to working on those things. And again, bittersweet to be here for my final meeting, but you're in good hands, and best of luck to everyone.
Commissioner Smith?
I want to say some congratulations as well, and I don't usually like to repeat when something has been said, but it's worth repeating. Congratulations to Commissioner Bonzel on your reelection. Congratulations to Mayor Protem Davis on your election and your assignment to the role as Protem. Congratulations to Commissioner Hill on your new role as state rep, and congratulations to Mayor Mayor for your new role as well. I made a motion tonight earlier, I don't know if you caught it, but it was the first time I made a motion in over three years. So I was like, kept raising my hand, I was really excited, I kept getting turned down by this guy over here, but anyway, I got one in. I did want to thank the community, I wanted to thank staff, and I wanted to make sure to thank the commission for allowing me the privilege to serve as mayor for the last three years. It has really been the honor of my life, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve in a role that has meant a lot to me personally, and I think, I think it was a good time for the city of Marquette to, it felt like a time of transition. And I feel like it was positive. It's time for me to step back and focus on some other things. I still will be a commissioner for the next few years, and I look forward to serving in that role alongside this commission, and then hopefully, we'll have one new commissioner here soon, although those are going to be some pretty big shoes to fill with Commissioner Hill leaving us here. I did want to ask city manager, do you mind to respond to Bruce Heikla's comments just a little bit? I think he had stated that we've never done this before. If you don't know, maybe we could get back, but I think, I can recall a few projects, but I don't remember the specific details where we built infrastructure. I know that we've done it before, and I, it's just right on the tip of my tongue, but I hear you, Bruce. I know we've had conversations about this before. I certainly respect your opinion, and there is definitely some conversation to be had there for future discussions. So thank you for coming tonight. And then, Stephen, thank you for coming. I have toured the Room at the Inn, I've been there, I've had lunch there. I'd love to do it again, so I'll definitely be in touch. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Solas?
Well, like others, I would like to certainly remember Mike Plord's passing. He was a great commissioner. He was a good friend. He was always with a smile, a real booster of Marquette, too, when we got out of town a little bit. He was really selling Marquette to anybody he could find. And really, in many ways, a wonderful example of a citizen that stepped forward to serve his fellow citizens. And he did that with grace and charm, and certainly will be missed within the confines of the city, certainly. But we all pass. I would like to see, as I think I've mentioned before, additional detail on the parking garage as it applies to the vault project. I think as a commission, we really need to pay some attention to that in detail over time as to how it will be funded and operated. I know we've touched on that a little bit, but to really see the functional document, I think, is very important to us. I would point out that housing is not a city of Marquette problem. It is a problem not only in the Upper Peninsula, but certainly across the entire state of Michigan and across this country. So we need to, when we understand what our problems and challenges are, understand that those same problems and challenges extend throughout the United States. So the help that we need is going to come, quite frankly, from other exterior sources. And hopefully, as Commissioner, Representative Hill said, with the opportunity to avail ourselves, hopefully, of some funding sources and some guidance in Lansing, we can make an impact on it. But it's not something that you're going to snap your fingers on and all of a sudden all is perfect and all is wonderful. It's going to take an awful lot of hard work, an awful lot of luck in being able to crack some additional funding loose, and also the understanding that we don't just have a problem, a challenge, if you will, with the lower end of housing. If, according to the real estate agents, we have a problem with the upper end of housing, in that we have folks wanting to move into town that can't find the house they want. They can't find that $500,000 house. Now, we may say, well, wait a minute, I'm not worried about taking care of the rich people, I'm worried about taking care of the folks that aren't as well-off. True statement. But on the other hand, there's a market there, and there's a need there, because if we don't have that $100,000, or that $500,000 house, then it goes somewhere else. Then the person who could be here working, doing that high-end job, isn't here, because they can't find adequate housing for their family. So it's a multifaceted and multi-level problem that we have to figure out how we work our way through successfully. But I will guarantee that it will not be solved without the full cooperation of the surrounding communities. In fact, the full cooperation of the county, because again, this is not a city of Marquette problem. This is a county of Marquette problem. This is an Upper Peninsula problem. This is a state of Michigan problem. This is above and beyond trying to find, how do we fix Marquette? Because those tentacles go across the entire nation. And again, it's going to take, in Michigan's perspective, certainly some additional help from Lansing on how we can do that best. I'd like to give my thanks to Mayor Smith for being such a graceful and effective mayor over the last several years. I employed her to run again. I was disappointed she is not running, because I think of the job and the wonderful job that she did. But we understand, too, that there are exterior stresses, and it's a good opportunity, I think, as you indicated, to move on and to pass the gavel. So to our brand-new mayor, use the gavel well. You have someone you can emulate and at least follow in philosophy, I think, of how to run the city and how to run a meeting. You have certainly my fullest support, as do all the folks that are elected. The organizational meeting for the city commission is also a time of new beginnings, because the new year begins for us next meeting. And we certainly have the new year begins for us next meeting, and we certainly have a pile of challenges awaiting us. The ones that you saw on the consent agenda tonight are only a tip of the iceberg. So, we have much to do this coming year and much to be productive in. And we certainly would ask your support as we move our way, and your input and your information and your thoughts as we move through that difficult period, because it will be a difficult year. Thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to speak.
All right. I do apologize, some of what I'm going to say is also going to be repetitive, but as Mayor Smith has noted a few different times, sometimes that happens when you're last one that gets to speak. I did want to start out with congratulating Mayor Pro Tem Davis and Commissioner Bonzal on your re-elections and your election as mayor pro tem, as well as thanking the public for re-electing both of them, as they're both truly significant assets to this commission and to the city. I also wanted to congratulate Representative Hill. Got a lot of neat, like, title changes going on here. And again, thank you for all of the service and work you've put into the city. And I don't think the public truly sees it enough, but we all see how much passion you have for what you do, and we appreciate it. I would like to also thank Commissioner Smith for not only serving in the commission for years, but as a mayor for three years, going through so many different challenges, a pandemic, what seems like several different crises, having a child in the middle of it, and still keeping a steady hand and being a confident leader for the city. And frankly, being a mentor and a friend to me as well. So, thank you. I should at least mention here that I also would like to thank my colleagues for electing me mayor. I just, you know, I feel like every mayor has a little bit different leadership style, and thankfully, if I ever need advice, I have two phenomenal former mayors right here beside me. But that I truly do intend to be a fair, transparent, and active mayor. With that, I'm going to yield this to our city manager for any comments.
Sure. I'll touch on the question first about Hemlock and have we done a local development agreement in the past that has extended utilities to a development that was done by a private developer? And yes, we have, and actually, we have with this specific developer, and that was the Harbor Vista Apartments that you see over, just heading outside of town. But that did extend the utilities over to that area, and I believe is exceeding the expectation for repayment. And that's what I think is very different in this, in this arrangement, is in the fact that there is a expected and agreed-upon repayment period, which is typically shorter than what it would be with a brownfield or with any other type of funding that would require some sort of assistance upfront. And at this point with Hemlock, the projection is to be repaid, I think the agreement actually says 10 years, but it is going to be closer to that five to seven year, depending on what happens with the costs and the timeframe. And this is extending utilities out into an area that does not have utilities and is rather challenging to get utilities out there, and it will be paying for public infrastructure with the utility extensions, but also with the roads as well. So, that is just kind of something that is a little bit different here, and it really has been, you know, great conversations with Bruce, Mr. Higle, who has come in to talk about this. So, we really do appreciate when he really thinks these through and comes to us as well. So, I can certainly provide more information, and I do believe we'll have an update to the commission on where this project is standing, because it has been, as I stated, rather challenging for that terrain in that area. So, it has been slightly delayed in the timing that we had anticipated originally. So, I believe that was all you asked on that. In relation to just housing, I do want to just mention that there will be some updates about affordable housing, the projects that we have explored and have been a part of, including the intergovernmental coalition that we've had with other municipalities and with the county. I think you will be happy to hear some of the updates we'll be providing with that. And then also, I just want to mention that there has been some specific funding for the UP, which we should feel incredibly honored to see this happening in the UP, for a regional housing development fund that Invest UP had a huge part in advocating for with this latest budget appropriation. So, I think there's a couple of things that can be told on the efforts that really have started here at the commission level, too. So, I'll send some more of that once we get a chance. And then for the vault, lastly, on the topics tonight, the vault, you'll see some more information coming forward as we get closer to presenting some of the next steps, which includes that development agreement. And we have talked with commissioners on a few specific questions and concerns, and we've been able to either incorporate those or communicate those into developing that next step. So, and then just lastly, congratulations to our re-elected commissioners and now new leadership positions as well, and to former Commissioner Hill. It has been incredibly great to work with you, and it's an honor to have been working with you, and I'm really excited to have our relationship, you know, kind of take that next step over towards the state and really have those good working relationships. It can be awfully lonely sometime with the local municipality having to take on some of these challenges, so it's going to be really great to have that relationship. So, thank you. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 8:11 PM.